I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is approval of the agenda.
I approve for the approval of the agenda for September 23, 2025.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Or say no. Agenda's approved. Next is consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent. Consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, I guess. On accounts payable. I was curious, why were there two different, on page one of four, why were there two different inspection companies for the tower inspection?
Two sort of charges. Should be, each tower has its own. I think they itemize that way. Like 500 and 400.
It says one is for Cordepro Companies and the other for Dixon Engineering. So, I don't know if that was different kinds of towers require different inspectors or what. Curiosity as much as anything, I guess.
Are they for different things?
Yeah. I think it's just different towers. I'll get you the answer, I'll give you an email on everybody.
I don't know if one of them, maybe the one that got hit by the airplane required some kind of a special, you know, special inspection or something.
Who was that? Any other questions?
I don't have any specific question other than to, I just want to, it kind of relates to accounts payable, but still have a lot of questions about spending at the Playhouse and I know we got our audit coming up, so hopefully we can get some more feedback then.
What's an intimacy coordinator for that? Page two of four.
What is your guess?
What's that?
What is your guess?
Maybe I need one, I don't know if it's worth it.
I must have had kisses in this.
Make sure it stays within parameters, I'm sure it will just all of them.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
All those say no. Consent agenda's approved. Next up, these messages. Start with Kenya.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to remind folks that we have the senior dinner. It's October 27 over at the senior center and please RSVP to me, just to make it easy for Kristi Marsh over there. I don't know, Lillian, do you have, what's a senior over there?
I think they're over 55 or 50.
Okay, okay. That was one question we has. Pardon?
You take everybody because it's a senior center. I can't turn down anyone.
Okay. Okay, I know that was the question that council had is what, what are we calling a senior? Because this is senior millage funds going to that and I know you're on the board. And then we have to decide what time it is, which I believe is five. I gave Brenda a news release, but I'm not sure I saw that. Okay, okay, I'll work on it.
I hope it will be better for Kristi.
I did, I did, but I've got the news release out and not sure where it landed. Because I thought Brenda was going to send it out, but anyway, October 27th it is and I think, I just wanted to know what was on the next work session. I've been trying to, I think in the past year, trying to get the energy efficiency report, just to get a feel for where we're at with this rebuilding and what, you know, what low hanging fruit that, I think I promised to send it to you, didn't I, Dan?
I actually had a meeting earlier, last week.
Oh, good, okay. Just kind of what low hanging fruit, if we already, you know, tackled.
I haven't had a chance to do an assessment. I got familiar with the report and there are some easy ones like insulating outside wall outlets. That stuff's pretty simple to achieve.
Yeah, there's easy stuff we should be tackling. Some of the things are more expensive and may have a longer payback. On the other hand, our energy bills are not going down either, are they? You know, so, and then just housing, I think, I'm not quite sure where we ended up with that because the topic was kind of broad. It was, it was a couple of things and we tackled one, but I still want to look at how we can accommodate young families, seniors going forward. So those are two things I'd like to see on the next work session agenda unless there's something that's higher priority.
Well, I just did a quick look for the Muskegon County Senior Millage and they're calling senior 60 and over. They say anybody 60 and over qualifies for the service, so that helps clarify what it would be for the official use of those funds. Maybe that's the 60 is the cutoff.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. We'll figure it out.
The short-term rental discussion that we've had, come get in there, Jeff.
I saw the wheels.
The question on the table is how many do we have? And so I just wanted to let council know that I connected Brenda with the operations manager at Visit Muskegon who is working on that number for the county. So the two of them can narrow that down for the city. So that's all I have at the moment.
Dan, can I comment on your email from today?
Yeah.
Would you want to comment on it first? I'll do it. You'd rather, you'd rather have me do it?
Either way is fine. You want me to, that's what I'm here for.
Okay. Well, I, this is for transparency purposes, so people know about some things. Again, Dan sent an email to council today dealing with the costs of the pocket park. And the cost of the, the cost of the bathroom kit that was installed was $51,900 and a little bit more. The design cost for the pocket park was $47,000. Construction cost was $284,000 and it comes to a total of $379,000 and $500. And now I want to leave the question of whether that pocket park is a good thing or not. I want to leave that out of the discussion here that I want to talk about. But the first time I heard about the pocket park, I believe it was right after I got on the council. And it was already underway and it seems to me that the cost that was, that they were talking about at that time was $160,000 to $180,000. And then it went up to $270,000. And then the city manager at the time announced that they wanted to add in a bathroom, even though we had one to rent. Even though we had one to rent about twenty yards away. And that was gonna increase the cost to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So I spoke about that a couple of times in meetings here and then the city manager came back and said, well, he's gonna order a, he's gonna order a bathroom to keep the cost down. And that's the one that came in at fifty-one thousand dollars. So anyway, then about May of this year. Let's see, that's about May of this year is when he announced that the cost of that kit was fifty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. And said that it would be under budget. It's, the project was still under budget. So I asked him what the budget was and he actually admitted he didn't know in the meeting here. And so now we're at three hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars. This kind of spending, in my opinion, is absolutely shameful. When we've got people with roads that aren't getting fixed. We've got other issues and, and the trouble with this thing is that the spending came out of TIFRA, which council doesn't have any authority over. You know, so we'll get blamed for this, but it's not our fault. At least at least five out of seven of us here don't have any involvement with that TIFRA, so it's not our fault. But to me, I just can't believe this kind of money is being spent on something like that. So I guess, is it, does that include the, are there any other charges coming, coming in yet, you think?
That's the best as of right now. I don't know.
Yeah, there's probably a few stragglers, I would guess.
I don't know who paid the mule.
Mule, I think, is the arts council, isn't it?
Thought it was a collaboration. I thought we gave them a little bit of money. Not a lot. But I thought we voted to give them some money, but they were, they did the crying share of it themselves.
Okay. So if anybody wants to talk about me being negative, that's okay, but I want people to know what the hell's going on here. I'm done. Jeff.
Just a reminder, oh, we got a couple meetings before that. Just a reminder, everybody, the pickup starts to the end of October. Looking at the leaves in my yard, I think we're gonna have an early drop due to the drought, but hopefully everybody gets small on it. I think the law will be on the ground by then, but. Looking at the what I wanna call it, the amount of hunters that came out to we don't call it, Steve. Put in for the, put in for those, the. There was a lot. There was a lot. They came out of the woodwork.
So we definitely need a lottery.
Yeah, it sounds like everything, sounds like everything went through really well. Talked to a bunch of my friends that put in. Some of them were disappointed that they didn't. Some of them were happy that they did in the spots they got. But again, it's a two-week deal and it rolls over, so my guess is it'll just keep rolling over until the end of January, I think now, so two weeks is a shot, so. Yeah, I was, I was pleasantly surprised that how many people put in.
I think there were several picked already, up to maybe six for each.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, yeah, so.
Five or six or something already. Cause you can actually go hunt during gun season too.
Yeah.
It's just that you have to wear orange.
Yep, October one through.
It's the only difference.
Yep, October one through the end of January, so. Hopefully we reduce this.
Uh, you have to have a gun license. No.
No. Only you have to wear hunters orange because of rifles and we won't have to worry about that in the city because no hunting with rifles in the city, so.
But you still.
They still have to, they still have to follow.
Still have to wear orange.
Yeah, at least a hat.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep, yep, but yeah, that's all. Let's hope it works out.
Yes.
Cause I had a lunch in my yard again.
Scott.
I just watched two bucks squirming off down on Warner Street yesterday, coming back from the grave and at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Oh, really? I don't know why, but they are.
Anyhow, I wanna give appreciation, kudos to Dan for approving and for the DPW crew for cleaning up the alleys. A lot of them needed done and the ones that I've been down since look fantastic. That's all I have.
Steve.
Yeah, this really doesn't have anything to do with the city, but it just seems like the last two weeks, I'm, I'm kinda still in shock of what happened a couple of weeks ago out in Utah and I just, it's just amazing to me how that one incident changed the attitude of a lot of people in the whole country and in the whole world for that matter. It seems to me like the line between one side and the other is so far apart right now that I can't imagine that there being any compromise with those who support killing people instead of discussing things. And I can't, you know, it seems to me like you got good on one side and evil on the other, truth on one side and lies on the other. And it just blows my mind. I, I just find it hard to think about anything else with, with what's going on. I, I could see no compromise between the two sides on any of this stuff. And one side celebrates the death of a, of a man who was a husband and a father. And they act like they wanna kill his wife and his kids too. Some of them, and, and to me, I, I just, it just blows my mind. It just, I don't know where we go from here as far as this, like I said, has got nothing to do with the city, but I just couldn't go without commenting on how this has changed my view of what the political differences are in this country at this time. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
City manager, do you have anything?
Yeah, I've got quite a few things, but to begin, I'd like the, I asked the chief of police to create a report from activity from Memorial Day to Labor Day, just to share with the theory.
I think everybody in the council has had that little summary sheet. Gives you kinda a breakdown of calls for service, reports that would generate actual police calls. Gives you a rundown, a little bit of call response times. It's all generated by dispatch. So calls and dispatch, how long it takes us to get to a call on average once we get assigned that call. And then just kinda a breakdown of, of the types of calls that we take over that summer period, so.
It was a great report and I appreciate that information.
Yeah, and how, how frequently do you anticipate doing them? Cause I, I agree, it's a great report, super helpful.
I agree. I think it's something great to share. And I know that Dan and I both agree that that's something that should be done on a regular basis, whether it's, you know, just an annual one in the summer. I know Dan and I will chat about it further. If it's something quarterly that you guys would like, we could definitely do that as well.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see it too. I think that's a great addition. I'd like to see it on a regular basis. You, you made a comparison on, on response time between us and the townships?
Yes.
Were you able to get that for Vonnegut too?
I could have. I didn't, I didn't draw. I know they're very close to what we are in time, you know, call wise, response time. You know, the township has got a much larger area
Right.
to respond to and, and what doesn't, obviously wasn't, doesn't flesh out in the report is obviously, you know, the time that what's called CAD, it's called dispatch delay. So you may call it a dispatch in the county and have to wait fifteen minutes for that call and it gets put into into the stack for an officer to take because they are back walking calls and so. That's just, that's, that, that number is just what it takes when that call gets to set to one of our MCT units or to an officer to when they arrive at the scene at that call.
Brandon, did you have, I didn't see, but the assist teller agencies, I hope, oh yeah, okay, nevermind, I got it. Like the money you and them coming across to us. I mean, cause it's, you guys, I don't know if these guys know, they do that on a regular basis to back each other up, so.
Yeah.
Probably back up the county, county backs us up.
Yeah, I mean, I could definitely draw up the total, but that's not just the net report to see.
Question for you.
Yes.
Really appreciate that it's, it's very helpful and would like to see it quarterly. I think that would be great. One question I had is in putting it together, do you think that you might be able to identify some areas where we need more attention based on, you know, increases in different types of calls?
I mean, you can definitely, I mean, if we drew out a pin map, I'm glad you can see that there is definitely higher call volume locations. But, you know, obviously in general along the Colby corridor, I mean, obviously that's if you look at where the locations of the drunk driving arrests occurred, a lot of them are around that corridor. It's a heavy traffic area. But there's, there's actually a couple of them that were out on White Lake Drive. So you can draw some you know, relationship to where you could patrol heavier, but it's hard. Cause some of it, like domestics, it's you know, there might be three or four that occur on Colby Street, you know, the apartment complexes, but then there might be three or four that are down Division Street, different locations, so.
And I meant more categories of things, you know, like if something is happening more, like I know that you certainly respond to a lot of domestic calls.
Yeah. And calls. Now, if there's a, like if we have a rash of car Viennese or car loris, sure, that stuff goes right out to the guys immediately, like, hey, we've had fires six overnight. They were in this block range on Division Street or Meers. So then, yeah, definitely we do targeted controls and you have that kind of activity happening.
Okay, and, and too, just, I know with, that we have a lot of, generally a lot of mental health issues and, you know, just, just making sure we have enough capacity to deal with the, the changing issues as they, as they come about. So this is very helpful.
Those officers just went training last week for CIT and that's a big, not just a big push here in Michigan, but nationwide to get more mental health training for law enforcement.
I saw that and congratulations to both of them.
Brandon, does, does the, the CAD side on the, on the police side have the, the hot call area like the fire side does? I don't know. Pete, Pete, I know that the fire chief can, can actually come up with a, a hot sheet essentially, or a hot that shows the heat spots where like the majority of your calls are.
Yeah, like a heat mapping. Yep, very, very similar. It's, the current CAD system we have does like, it's like a pin mapping thing, like kinda the old, old and pin.
Yeah, like the old one Bart used to do where you put a blue pin in for one and a yellow pin for ten and I remember that one.
So there's something very similar on our side as well.
Okay.
So I, I think something really to highlight though is the response time city of Whitehall gives, you know, in comparison to our neighbors in the county, I think says a lot about the police department. Okay. And as far as DPW, thanks Scott. I appreciate you calling those guys out. They worked their butts off for about nine days, so appreciate you mentioning them. Okay, the audit that was supposed to start this week. Plant Moran is not ready to for the audit and the scheduling with the people who do our audit, they don't have availability until November. So because Plant Moran had a delay getting access to a lot of our files because of like how our S drive works, where like our shared folders, they couldn't get access, so they're, they're just not prepared and the audit wouldn't be honest. Or it wouldn't, it wouldn't give us a full picture. I wasn't happy about hearing this on Friday, but I can't do anything about it either. And I, they did finally upload the the budget for this year, the adopted budget, so I, I have a lot better detail on some spending, specifically like Playhouse. I can, I can provide better numbers as time goes on, but it, it's being delayed. I'm not happy about it, but I can report to all of you.
Is that, so we are changing auditors then from the folks last year?
No, they're the same, they're the same ones, but they have several municipalities to do and they can't loop back around. They don't have another free week until like November.
Oh, okay.
So Plant Moran might be ready at the end of September or like at the beginning of October, but our auditors can't get here until November. So it's like because of the scheduling of two different companies is the issue.
Okay.
Eastbrook Homes, we recently paid a nine hundred thousand dollar payment to them. That's our due care responsibilities. We we normally pay that in May. Cork and I weren't notified until like late August that this was a bill and then we had questions from Eastbrook Homes about their schedule of our payments and how much longer we'll have to pay. So we didn't, there was about a week and a half, two weeks of us going asking for more information from them. So it's finally paid, but you'll see a nine hundred thousand dollar on the accounts payable and that's what that is. Next year will be about one point one and then it will severely taper off after that. But we will owe them the, the original amount is four point nine million and with four percent interest, so that's what we're paying right now, just for the brownfield. So after twenty-seven, we'll, we'll at least start getting more rewards from the development, but it's not until then. Oh, and I, I wanna like advertise contact form. I sent it to all of you, but anyone listening online or in the audience. We have a form right on our website that you can reach. You send it. Hit submit and it'll go to the clerk and she'll track it and give it out to which department it needs to go to. So I appreciate if people use that because I can actually go in and track where things are going. So we, we won't have a meeting where I told so and so this, or I told so and so that. And if you're able to go online, submit it, submit the form, it's beatractable meetings. And just along that same line of transparency, last week we did have a a closed session, or two weeks ago we had the closed session and we're confused as, in the beginning to do a roll call vote or just a group yay or nay. And we held the door open for a little bit longer cause while we worked that out. But Will and the other attorney that was here told us to do the roll call vote. That's why we kept the doors open, but we had already dismissed everyone. I just, I think it's necessary to highlight that. All right, our, our hiccup, our bad. I'll take blame for it. I should have, I should have called everyone back in, but I didn't. So that one's on me. And we get to the snow blower? Or are we, or is that down the line?
We're still.
And I think that's it.
Contact us form on the website?
That's on the website.
So for myself, last week I spent three days in Grand Rapids attending the Michigan Municipal League Conference. It's a great opportunity to meet with mayors, managers and other elected officials learn what, what their challenges are, what they're working on, what their focus is. I attended a number of breakout sessions. One on AI and government, which is, AI is, as we all know, is everywhere now and it's, it's becoming more and more prevalent in our world. It was a very informative session. There was another one on civility in, in city government, which everybody had horror stories of their councils with issues and, and how important it is to remain civil and respectful. There was also a very interesting workout, work session on place making, which is for those that don't know what place making is, it's people talk about your first place is your home, your second place is where you work, and your third place is where you socialize and meet. And how important it is for communities to have these third places where people can meet. And the pocket park is an excellent spot for people of the community to meet and talk to one another rather than shoot one another, as we've seen. So it was a great opportunity to just communicate with people. All right, next we have a public comment. Anyone wishing to make a comment?
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure everybody here knows who I am. I just wanted to conclude with Steve saying it was absolutely one of those telephone things I've ever seen. Watch that video. Unbelievable. Watched that video, unbelievable. Anyhow, um, I think Scott Hubler quoted us a million dollars a mile on road paving, isn't that correct?
It's, I think it was closer to a million and a half nowadays, and it's probably gone up even more.
Okay, well, let's, um, let's go to the cost of this Pocket Park. $379,500. That puts us almost a third of the way there for a mile of payment, a little less than a third of the way there. $51,000 for an outhouse kit. Don't tell me you can look at that and not think outhouse, because that's what it looks like, an overgrown outhouse. I got it that, you know, people think that it's a nice thing, but it's unnecessary. Not when we have roads in the condition they are, and this council does not have the priorities they need to have. Spending money every which way, for what? You can't drive down a street in this town without hitting potholes. Alice Street, from Warner on South, unbelievable. Anyhow, I have a second, uh, item. We're talking about the ADA. We get into the ADA, we're talking about the letter of the law, the intent of the law, and let's talk about the spirit of the law. Now, this is a town that prides itself on being progressive. I hear that all the time. Whitehall's a very progressive town. So a progressive, uh, approach for something like that would be to err on the side of really helping people. But we get this fight. People want to fight not to do ADA. And it's, it's really confusing to me. Because on the one hand, we're gonna take care of the little guys and minorities and the disables are actually classified as a minority under federal law, and as a matter of fact, any crime committed against a disabled person is a hate crime. So, uh, this, this whole idea, uh, we have to fight for it and, okay, so everybody's gotta drive through a bar. But I got another problem with that. How much money is a city given for the co-opting of a city property, an entire sidewalk, for a commercial enterprise? I don't think I can use the gazebo without paying a rental fee. I may be wrong. I think there are, there's a lot of things that you have to pay for in Whitehall. And to say that we're gonna let this one commercial entity have this for free, I think is, I, I don't, I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers. That's taxpayer property. And to generate funds for a couple of individuals, it's, it, it's a nice thing that happens there, I understand. Not a problem.
Can you wrap this up? Your three minutes are up.
Yeah, I think, I, I think I've got it, uh, right, for, for right now. I've got some more stuff to do in the second half. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? More people, I'll pack some more.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Kathy Power Mahoney. My friends and family call me KP. I hope you will too. I live at 8008 Old Channel Trail in Montague. I think, Mr. Mayor, that's your north office up there?
Yes, it is.
And I, uh, I did want to address the one issue, uh, that, that Steve brought up. And I just want to say that when there was a death in Utah, it hurt all of us. It wasn't partisan at all. The first thing I said is this should not be happening in the United States of America. We all have friends, family, and neighbors who we care about, which leads me into my next issue. And that is the deployment of National Guard into the state from other states and federally. And I would like to say and ask that we not have troops deployed into the state of Michigan, into our cities and communities without collaboration from our governor and with our governor, governor, and with the men and women in blue and brown. The men and women who wear the officer's uniforms of blue, the chiefs, their departments, and the sheriffs in brown need to have collaboration when anything is happening in the communities because they have the lay of the land from a local law enforcement perspective. And I trust that more than I do from anywhere else in the United States coming into the state of Michigan. So what I did, because I felt so strongly about it, is I wrote a letter to the president, and then I wrote a letter to the editor. And so I provided that for you from the beacon, and I hope that it's instructive for you. That's the teacher in me that comes out now, and I spent a lifetime in public administration and teaching public administration. So I thought it best to just put pen to paper and be instructive. So please teach, treat it as a civics lesson. I know all of you are elected officials and you are very much into the specifics of the day and the time and the place. But, um, this helps to frame what is happening here. In the state of Michigan, you have seen already where a US senate candidate and several gubernatorial candidates have said, bring it on to the National Guard in Detroit. Let's let that have simmer, but let's have a conversation with those who live in Detroit, those who, uh, regulate the law enforcement there, and our governor. Michigan's Military Act is silent on whether or not other troops can come into the state of Michigan from National Guard by other governors, and that's absent. And so I did want to point that out too, that it is absent in the language of Michigan's Military Act. And, uh, what I have also done is if you are so inclined, I've drafted a resolution to reaffirm, reaffirm state sovereignty for you. And another had, uh, this isn't drafted by me, but it's drafted by someone else on a resolution just stating emergency preparedness and collaboration, which is a softer touch. And being that September is emergency preparedness month nationally, that might be something that you want to send a message. Uh, lastly, I itemized some areas that I thought might pull out a, um, Q and A for you. And so I put it into a talking point paper and just had some contemporary talking points put into it as well as the historical issues, and I thought that that might help you to understand where we're at with this, so. I just want to say thank you for your kind attention. If you do have any questions, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll get in touch with you at another time. And, uh, if you do have any questions, uh, my phone number for the record is 517-887-0580. And just to let you know, I care deeply about our communities. I have three uncles and mom at the same time. And that's what set me on a pathway to public service, my whole career. So thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else?
Well, I don't have a speech really handy, but over the weekend I had a, a helmet, our favorite people helmet. Their alarm was going off. It was just whining like crazy. So I called 911. And they handled it, but I told them, I said, Chris Mahoney. So they'd gotten hold of 911, gave them the phone number for them to call helmet. Is anybody, I can keep the number, because when that alarm goes off, it just whines constantly. Right from Saturday to Sunday, the last time I called them. So nobody knew who to call, and helmet, nobody's there on the weekends. That's when it happens. Well, you know how everybody doesn't like noise. So that was one thing. Then the Pocket Park, I just say, I go, I don't, I don't go down there. I won't go down there. I don't even use the playoffs. Because I had my, I run in the senior center. Like, you know, five days a week. Weekends I stay home and do my housework and all that kind of stuff. So I enjoy my peace time on the weekends, but I'm not a bar hopper or anything like that. But, you know, the Pocket Park, that's a lot of money to put in that place down there. And the psych pill has a lot of money, but everybody at home, everybody wanted to enhance everything, build things up. Now our senior center is in bad condition. Our whole building's crumbling under us. The foundation's bad. They say it's gonna $207,000 to fix that building. So I don't know what we're gonna do with that. We may have to move. If we're not for sure, we're gonna move. And, and Montague just bought the car shop over there. They're gonna build it into a car place where the cars get cleaned and the ambulance carrying, like, you want to use, but, you know, employees that need to use it for the city, they can go and use it. I don't know all the details, but that's $98,000 to spend, like, that one. The building was said, the person was quoted $680,000, and it was $69,000. Now they said it's $207,000 to fix a building. So just FYI, so if anybody sees these articles, it's, we're in the works, bro. We don't know where we're gonna be for it.
What's the cost of the church over here, I wonder, on Division Street?
$407,000. And I thought a full sharing glass too.
That'd be great for you guys.
I don't know which they have.
You got a gym in there, do you think?
Yeah. They have gym and zan, and then we have Girl Scouts, yeah. We're all getting help from people, you know, in, in our centers, so we get, you know, more activities. Because even, even to put on the A-12 thing, we, we do a harvest fest. They're at 80, 90 people in their little, you've been there.
Yes.
You've been there. You know, it's not a whole lot with them. We do, we just ordered another table, a small table that you ran on on Thursday. We don't have enough tables that accommodate the size to play the games that the people play. Because we have two big tables, because we have coffee guys in the morning, they sit at the big corner too. Now, they're politically aimed, they're just friends, you know, how they do it, are there anymore, because we're not supposed to have politically in our building at all. So that's all I'm gonna say. It's like I said, I didn't have an agenda, but I just told you what I had.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to all the business, which is Resolution 2526 Sidewalk Snow Blower.
I'll move Resolution 2526 to Sidewalk Snow Blower.
Second.
It moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I still have the same concerns that I had before on the side of it and whether we are dedicating an employee to using it.
So I looked at the employee we hired for snow removal specifically. Last winter he did 170.25 hours of snow removal, about 100 hours of cold patch work, and then 28.5 working on the snow blower. So that was time in the shop specifically working on cobotus. So I, as far as the snow blower goes, it's pretty substantial, $50,000. That's enough of the sneeze at. I get, I get the questions. It was budgeted for, it was budgeted, budgeted for $55,000, this is $5,000 less. I looked at similar models for John Deere. John Deere, like, it's too tall. That's more for like pulling agricultural work, where this one is, it's got a wider base and, uh, can shift a lot better on slopes and things like that. So it's better for what we're using it for, but, yeah, I'm gonna, it's $50,000.
I mean, I, my concern isn't the price as much as it is the size of it. I mean, sidewalks are 48 inches wide. If you're gonna buy a 48-inch snow blower, it's not gonna work.
No, the sidewalks shouldn't all be five feet.
I think there's a number of them that are narrower than that.
So we've been around and measured all around the city.
There, there are a select few that are narrower than four, or than five feet, but the majority of them are five feet wide. They do have overgrowth, so they do look narrower, but they are, I mean, they're five feet wide. All the new ones we put in are five feet. It's, it's the right, it's the proper.
I had a, uh, question arise, rose in my mind on the, where you've got a, a sidewalk that sticks up that much, is that gonna catch the blade? There's places, um, on the sidewalk where you could see, I don't know if it's.
Oh, like roots popped up?
Well, the, the concrete being shoved up. It's a half inch, quarter inch, inch and a half, where, where would it end? There's places where the, somehow, whether it was intentional or with the plow or snow blower, where the edge of the concrete has been ground down. I don't know if that was.
Let me do that. Two years ago, they, they went and ground some of them down.
We ground a lot of them down, and the snow blower itself has a float feature on it.
Okay.
And it also rides on shoes, so we don't grind it right down to the cement, otherwise it'll just destroy the bottom of the snow blower. So it does ride on a set of shoes, and it is a float form, so that it will ride up over the cracks. And there may be a few in town that will eventually hit and we'll fix them, so.
For those of you that don't know, this is Don Bond from our DPW. Man that knows.
That's why I turned around when doing this.
All right, uh, this is a roll call vote.
Sickin' good?
Yes.
Yes. Holtzner?
Yes.
Zeamer?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Flala?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Resolution 2526 is approved. Next is new business, Resolution 2527.
I'll move Resolution 2527 to skate up.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I got one comment. Amazing the difference in the top and the bottom bid.
Isn't that crazy?
Hundred, almost a hundred, so the public knows almost $96,000 difference between the top bid and the bottom bid.
Well, and the cheapest one is furthest away too, I think.
Dexter?
Yeah, it's terrible far away, but yeah.
This depends on who needs business now and who needs business later.
I, I was amazed. This is probably one of the, in the years I've been on council, one of the biggest spreads in bids that I've, like I said, almost $100,000. That's, that's strange.
Hope you, I, I don't know exactly what this is, but.
Could you explain it?
So it's, it's a monitoring system on how much water we need to pump out to keep the towers full and to meet demand. Oh, okay. Those vitals are pretty, and ours is pretty good. So it's.
Something you don't want to say.
Do they, Brad, I was gonna ask, do they require a service or whatever?
There, this comes with a, a subscription as well that we have to pay every year. It's like $2,700. Annual costs for software updates and, uh, some maintenance. Drinking water is expensive.
Okay.
Clean drinking water is.
Yeah, we want clean drinking water, yeah. Is there any further questions? Roll call, please.
Zeamer?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Kabala?
Yes.
Holtzner?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sickin' good?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Resolution 2527 is approved. Next is public comment. Any public comment?
All right, so my memory might stir me wrong, but I think I got the main details. Um, I believe it was the Fourth of July parade. There was a group of people that, I believe it was hate speech signs that they were posting. Um, so it's really grateful to hear that they may have had a change of heart and that stuff is not inappropriate, especially when they now agree it was a horrible thing what happened to Charlie Kirk. So hopefully, things are changing in the right direction. For anybody that doesn't know, there's going to be an event at Funnel Field, um, this Saturday from seven to nine regarding the Charlie Kirk.
Where is it?
At Funnel Field.
Funnel Field.
From seven to nine. And I guess they got like a bunch of candles donated from when they did it over at Fremont. So, yeah, or grab your own candles, um, just in case anybody's interested in going. And also, I think it's for about a month now. They haven't posted the police logs on the police Facebook page for Whitehall. Um, I know it's not a requirement, but it's much appreciated. So I'll try to do that again.
Thank you for that comment. Anyone else?